Calling to order the Monday, April 7th, 2014 regular meeting of the Thirty-Fifth Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Egger? Councilmember Kadekko?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman? Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Here.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekko. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, please stand for the invocation.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this evening to talk about city matters and things that concern the great citizens here in Berkeley. Let's ask your blessing on this meeting. Give wisdom to these men and women that you have placed here to lead and serve this city. Give them great wisdom beyond their abilities. We ask your blessing on all the endeavors that are taking place. Excited to see all the summer things come up. There's hope that there's warm weather coming, and so we thank you for that and the faithfulness of getting through the hard winter season. So we ask your blessing on tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we come to the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. And seeing no great rush to the microphone, then we will move on to the Consent Agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read tonight's Consent Agenda?
Item number one, minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular Thirty-Fifth City Council Meeting of March 17th, 2014, and joint city work session of March 11th, 2014. Item number two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1277. Item number three, ordinance number 0214, matter of approving the second reading of an ordinance of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, amending Chapter 26, Article 9, Property Maintenance Code of the Berkeley City Code to adapt the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code. Item number four, proclamation number P314, matter of adapting a proclamation recognizing April as Fair Housing Month in the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Move to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Kadekko, support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Kadekko?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, we move on to the Regular Agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read the first item on the Regular Agenda?
Recognizations and Presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the Consent Agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Kadekko to read Proclamation 314.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley recognizing Fair Housing Month. Whereas, the month of April 2014 has been declared Fair Housing Month in Oakland County, Michigan, in recognition of the forty-sixth anniversary of the signing of the federal Fair Housing Law under the Civil Rights Act, and whereas, this landmark law, along with other federal and state legislation, strictly prohibits housing discrimination on the basis of race, color, sex, national origin, age, marital status, religion, disability, or family status, and whereas, Fair Housing Month is designed to heighten people's awareness of their rights under the law when pursuing the purchase of or rental of housing, and whereas, Berkeley residents are urged to contact Oakland County's housing counselors in its Community and Home Improvement Division if they think they have been victims of housing discrimination. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the Berkeley City Council officially proclaims the month of April 2014 to be Fair Housing Month in the City of Berkeley, Michigan. Proclaim this seventh day of April 2014 at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Prince, would you read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Public Hearing, matter of holding a public hearing regarding the reprogramming of 2010 Community Development Black Grant Funds.
Is there a motion to hold a public hearing on the CDBG funds?
Motion to hold a public hearing on the CDBG funds?
Support.
Motion proposed by Mayor Protem Turbrak, with support by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Sessa, perhaps you'd give us a little introduction before we begin the public hearing?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Welcome to all members of the public. Under this item, this is a public hearing, and at this time, we just simply ask individuals to come in and see if they have any questions or would like to comment regarding this item before the City Council. I know our city planner, Ms. Vanson, is with us this evening. Now, Your Honor, how would you like for us to handle this? Would you like to hear what this item is all about, or would you just simply open up, as you have already done, and then, at the next item?
Correct. I think that's what we'll do. So if anybody wants to comment on this item, please come to the microphone. Well, seeing no one eager to weigh in on this topic, then we will move on to the next item. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number three, the related item?
Motion number M-1314, matter of approving the reprogramming request for 2010 Community Development Black Grant Funds.
Is there a motion to approve M-1314?
Motion to approve M-1314.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekko. Now, Mr. Sessa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, in accordance with HUD regulations, in order for us to simply make any changes to our funding of various items, we obviously have to hold a public hearing, which we just did, and we ask individuals to comment. This item has been published, and so individuals know what it is that we're discussing. At this time, I would like to ask our city planner, Ms. Vanson, to just simply give a brief description on this matter, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that the City Council may have. Ms. Vanson?
Good evening. So, as we've discussed, CDBG is one of those items that Congress likes to cut, and the City of Berkeley used to get $90,000 back in 1996, and now, we get about $48,000. And so, what happens is, when you have a really bad winter, like we had, and all of this money, we have less money to spend on providing services to our seniors, as far as snow shoveling, and we had record snowfalls. So, we need to reprogram some money. Oakland County is allowing us to do this, even though the snow has already fallen, and we're very appreciative of that, so we're going to take some old money from 2010, which Oakland County is also very anxious to have us spend. We've been using that money a little bit of the time to reimburse for my time administering this program and Mr. Sabuda's time with regard to CDBG matters, and so, we're going to take it, and we're going to use it, and it will get a big check, and we'll be done with the winter of 2014, hopefully. Yay!
Good. It's a hopeful note, anyway.
I was holding out for gold, though. I thought, man, three more inches.
I know. Oh. Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Vanson? I have a question that you might be able to help explain how government money gets spent. This is 2000-
Federal money or local money?
Local money.
Okay.
When Oakland County wants us to spend 2010 money?
Okay.
I'm sure somebody is sitting at home thinking, oh, my goodness, they have it someplace, and they're not spending it.
I will be happy to explain. What happens is, is every year, we get a certain amount, because we are a sub-receipient of Oakland County. If we wanted to deal directly with HUD and get Community Development Block Grant money, we would not be able to do it, because we're too small. The Royal Oaks of the world, the Pontiacs of the world, they can deal directly with HUD. We cannot. Oakland County is big enough and has enough population that it can deal directly with HUD, and so, they administer a home improvement loan program, which is part of this money that they get from the federal government. Then, they portion it out to the various smaller communities, and they have a formula that they come up with that we get and that all of the smaller communities get. Every year, it changes based upon what Congress deems appropriate, and depending upon the U.S. Census, and how many low-to-modern-income people we have residing according to the Census. So, in 2010, we got money, and we have spent all but $3,000 of it, because we had a certain amount set aside for administration, which is my time doing this, my time making sure all the paperwork's in order, because there's a lot of it when it's the federal government, and that sort of thing. And so, it takes a little bit of time to spend it. So, we've had this money sitting. And Oakland County keeps saying, spend it, and I say, well, give us more money so that we can spend it, and I can do more paperwork, but they won't do that. So, that's why we've had the money. We have spent all of our 2011 money. We have almost spent all of our 2012 money, and so, that's how it works out. So, we can still use it, but it was allocated to us back in the summer of 2010, and it's just taken a while to spend.
Well, I'm glad we have it to offset some of the costs, and the important work as well, that it helps in our community, for people who are disadvantaged in one way or another.
Absolutely, and I think that was, that's a frustrating thing for a community, I'm sure for all communities, but particularly for Berkeley, because we are capped at those public services. They're capped at 35 percent. That changes from year to year as well, but typically, it's 35 percent. And so, those kinds of services that help folks stay in their home, and this is for senior, low-to-modern-income seniors that live in the community and have probably lived here their whole lives, and we want to have them stay in their houses and be able to do that, and we are capped at 35 percent. And we end up with sort of a rather awkward amount left over that can be used for actual bricks and mortar, which is a good thing, but then, we have to total up the money in order to make it worthwhile for DPW to go out to bed. Anyway, so.
Well, very good.
It'd be nice to be able to spend more on it, but we can't.
Well, thank you for staying on top of it and collecting what needs to come to the residents of Berkeley.
We will do our best.
Well done. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-1314?
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number four?
Motion number M-1414, matter of approving Berkeley Days 2014 from May 10th through the 19th, 2014.
Is there a motion to approve M-1414?
Move to approve M-1414.
Approved by Councilmember Kadekko?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Sessa?
Council, under this item, we are asking the City Council to formally approve Berkeley Days from May 10th to the 19th, and this is for the use of city streets and property, as well as public safety protection and public works, services, and things of that nature. But we have with us this evening the chairman, or the chairwoman of Berkeley Days, Denise Brainerd, and she will give us an update as to many of the events that are occurring at this year's event. We're very excited. Thanks. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I hope we're done with the winter. I really don't want any snow for Berkeley Days this year. Berkeley Days this year is going to kick off on Saturday, May 10th, which is the day before Mother's Day, and that is going to be our race, and the beneficiaries of that is the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. It's going to start off at Hurley Field, and it is the second-longest-running 10K in the state of Michigan. They've added a 10K, they've added a 5K, and also, a one-mile kind of fun run, so that there's something for everyone involved in this. I know this year also, the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society has reached out to some of the schools and getting some of those running programs, so that the children of Berkeley are going to be participating in that. So, that's going to kick off everything. Then, either on the 12th or the 13th, we're going to have a Miss Berkeley Days pageant. We have a group from the high school that has joined the Berkeley Days Committee, so they're going to be handling all the advertising. That is, what we're doing with the Miss Berkeley Days, what we're looking for is a representative to represent the city, a young woman. There's a $500 scholarship that goes along with it, and she appears at various functions throughout the year, the Rabina Rhapsodies. She is in the parade, the holiday parade, the Dream Cruise Parade, and just makes an appearance throughout the year to represent the city. So, that will be the 12th or the 13th. Wednesday is the game that everyone is looking forward to. I'm sure you guys have already started training for it.
We have.
With the Dad's Club and the Mom's Club. So, that rivalry will continue this year on Wednesday, the 14th. Thursday night is when the carnival will kick off. Thursday night is also the Taste of Berkeley, and that, we would like to have in the Community Center. We are also going to have a drawing, the questionnaire, the Berkeley Days questionnaire, that is available to all students under the age of, under eighth grade, up through eighth grade. I did bring copies of it, if you'd like to try your hand with some Berkeley trivia. And these will be available, they're going out through the school district. They are easier than they have been in the past. It is multiple choice and true or false. So, all of those right answers with that are going to get entered into a drawing, and the winner of that drawing, which will take place at 5:00 on Thursday, the 15th, the winner of that will get a VIP wristband that'll be good for free rides, on the carnival rides throughout the weekend. The Taste of Berkeley is that night. That is benefiting Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance. Tickets will be available at the Berkeley, at the Youth Assistance Office, and also through Councilmember Kadekko. The, we're also going to be doing, again, the Humanitarian of the Year and the Citizen of the Year, and those applications will be available throughout. We're going to have some at the Community Center. We'll have some up here at City Hall, and we'll also have some at the library. So, those will be available. If you know people in the community, either residents of the community or business members that have contributed, the community really comes together to make Berkeley Days happen. The Beer Tent will start Friday night. The rides will go Friday. We're also going to have the craft show again. The pooch pageant's going to be that morning. The craft show, we're going to have a petting zoo on Sunday. We're also going to be having the raffle at 4:30 on Sunday afternoon, and that prize is $1,000. Tickets are available, probably most of the community service groups in the city have tickets available. If you don't have any and you would like some, you can always find me, and I will always be carrying tickets with me as well. That being said, we are hoping this year to have the Beer Tent. We would like to use the Community Center parking lot, a portion of the parking lot for that. The place where we normally have had the Beer Tent in the past has trees that got planted right along the middle of it, so we were looking for an alternative place to put the Beer Tent. So, we have looked at the Community Center parking lot and using a portion of that. The Beer Tent's going to be sponsored by the American Legion to benefit local veterans, and last year, we donated, the purpose of Berkeley Days is to raise money for all of the community service groups in Berkeley, and it really is a coalition and a lot of hard work by all of the different community service groups. Last year, we raised over $20,000 and distributed that to the various community service groups in the city. Not only that, but it's a lot of fun. It's a great opportunity for kids to learn about Berkeley through the questionnaire, through the Historical Society. Last year, we launched their, they launched the book. They had the kickoff, and that was just tremendously successful. And I know the middle schoolers start watching, the midway starts setting up on Mother's Day, which makes that week a little tough over at Anderson, but it is an event that everyone in the community looks forward to. There really, truly is something for everyone. There's a pancake breakfast on Saturday and Sunday mornings, sponsored by the VFW, and other than that, oh, we also, how could I forget the horseshoes? We have our horseshoe rivalry on that Friday night at 7:00 between the Berkeley Days Committee and Council. So, other than that, if you have questions, I will be happy to answer any questions, or if you want more specifics, if you'd like to see the questionnaire, I brought copies with me.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Yes, I thought so.
What percentage of Berkeley's population is under 18 years old?
What? How did you get a comment? Send it to me. It is 22.8.
Thank you. I'll reserve comments on the softball game until later. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, thank you, Denise, again, for heading up this committee. $20,000 is a lot of money, and it requires a lot of hard work to make it happen, and yet, it's an enjoyable event as well in the city, one of the signature events in the city. So, we can have fun, enjoyment, and yet, you know, raise $20,000 for very significant organizations in the city. So, we thank you very much for all you do for that.
Thank you. I'm sorry, one thing I did forget. Last year, our theme for the event was the music programs for the high schools, and we did have music playing in the Community Center all year long. This year, we've decided that our theme for Berkeley Days is going to be the sports teams in Berkeley and the sporting events. We have so many different sports teams that a lot of people aren't aware that we have hoops and cheerleading and football and the softball and wrestling and rugby and all of these different teams. So, that is one of the things that we are going to have available during Berkeley Days this weekend, is a forum for all the different sports teams to set up exhibits and talk about their organizations, so.
And certainly, the music department has a lot to talk about this year.
Yes.
The Berkeley School District has been honored as being a best music education school district, one of the best in the country, and that is a marvelous achievement.
Absolutely.
One of the bands played at Carnegie Hall in New York a few weeks back. So, there's a number of wonderful things, and so, the theme of last year, you know, may have inspired greater effort across the board. So, that's very well done. Any other questions? Very good. Thank you, Denise. Is, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-1414?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number five?
Motion number M-1514, matter of approving an outdoor downtown area art show on Saturday, June 14th, 2014, from 10:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., the 13th Annual Berkeley Art Bash.
Is there a motion to approve M-1514?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker, with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa?
Council, I don't know if there's anybody from the chamber here with us this evening? No? Okay, very good. Then, I will just simply, I will just, Councilman Blanchard, I know, is our liaison. I'll just go over some items, and if you'd like to add some more, you know, please feel free. Again, you know, in our city, we're very, very pleased that we have these amazing events. Obviously, we're going to start with Berkeley Days, which I know a lot of people will participate. And now, on June, so everybody's starting a little bit early this year, we also have the 13th Annual Berkeley Art Bash, and I can't believe 13 years have gone by. Wow. So, basically, this event has been scheduled for Saturday, June the 14th, and it's from 10:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., and the bash will be held on 12 Mile Road between Wakefield and Tyler. Our streets will be closed from 5:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., and this allows them to set up and tear down, and we will allow sidewalk sales during the day of the event, and of course, sidewalk sales will include the Selena merchandise and things of that nature, not services, so just merchandise. The Berkeley Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring this event, and they have provided us with the necessary liability insurance, as they always do every year, and our Building Department and our Public Safety Department has reviewed this permit, and they are recommending it to the City Council for their consideration. Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and of course, Councilman Blanchard.
The chamber has been very busy with this, and in the past, they've done a wonderful job, and everything I've seen so far in their planning looks like the same. It's, it gets bigger every year, but we're to a point where we can only take so many, so now, they're having to select vendors, artists, to come into this. So, that's a real plus, because we're getting some very high-quality people exhibiting in there. So, it should be a wonderful event again.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Very good. Any additional discussion? Again, one of the signature events in the city, a great event, and we're thankful for the Chamber of Commerce for organizing this, and our Public Safety Staff and our city staff who cooperate with them to make it happen.
DPW do a fantastic job getting, getting ready for this and getting, you know, set up and torn down and opened up, and we've got to give a shout-out to them.
Very good. Then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-1514?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number six?
Motion number M-1614, matter of approving a, my deal purchase of 2014 GMC 4500 chassis and 16-foot van body at a total cost of $37,769 to Red Holman GMC of West Lane, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve M-1614?
Motion to approve M-1614.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard, with support by Mayor Protem Turbrak. Mr. Sessa?
Council, let me see, where should I begin with this item? Now, first of all, I'm very pleased to say that we have with us this evening our supervisor for the Department of Public Works, and Sean Young, and he will be here to give us a brief summary in terms of what this vehicle purchase is all about and help me address any questions. Now, this is a budgeted item, as you know, and we went through the, through my deal in order to get a good price, and I understand that we did get one of the, a very, very good price. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Young, so he can give us all the details. Thank you.
Evening. This is a 2014 GMC 4500 chassis. It's a cutaway chassis, which is basically a van with the back half of it cut off. We're having a 16-foot box installed, and that will hold a, this is part of a larger purchase, but this will hold the sewer camera that's yet to be purchased. It's pretty much a straightforward aluminum body on a 4500 cutaway chassis. My deal pricing is basically state-of-Michigan price they got is the price we got. Kind of like the Macomb County deals, yeah. Same type deal.
Very good. Mr. Sessa?
Thank you, Your Honor. As Mr. Young stated, this is simply part of an overall budget request. We're going separately for the items, as Mr. Young stated, in order to help us save some dollars. We budgeted a total of about $175,000 in order to do this, and it is in our current budget, and this is for the purchase of a new sewer camera, the crawler, accessories, vehicle, and the van body. So, this is just one of the items, and we will bring, we'll be bringing them to the City Council. I know that the Public Works Department has gone through extensive review to make sure that we have the proper items, and I know that Mr. Young worked very hard on this himself to make sure that this is what we need. Can you just explain to the City Council how, once we get all this together, how are we going to use this?
Once we get all this together, we'll get the chassis and the box on it, and once we pick a vendor for the sewer camera, we'll send the chassis and the box over to them, and they'll outfit the inside, put all the computer and the monitors and the camera and crawler system. What we do is, we go through, clean our sewers, camera them, and actually rate the sewers, which ones need work, which ones are okay. This is actually with a SAW grant. This is kind of important with the SAW grant issue. It's something we're currently doing now, but the equipment we're using, it's old VHS tapes. We can't really put it into a database and rate it the way we're doing it now. That and the parts for our old camera are pretty much obsolete. Fixing it in-house as much as we can.
There comes a time when-
Yeah.
Yes.
Old technology.
That's exactly right. Councilmember Kadekko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Young, for being here tonight and explaining. I remember, I was reading over this over the weekend, and I was really excited, and something to point out, we're replacing a vehicle from 1985, 29 years, and I think there's a lot to be said for that, so, you know, again, thanks for all the work you do. all the work you do. Pardon?
Still a good running van.
We take good care of our equipment.
I just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to say that I did previously talk to John and Derek about this. We went through all the specs. They're getting a pool vehicle out of Baybridge Pool, and the box setup, everything they did was, was right, right on. I've got a lot of experience in this area, and they called me and we went over it all, and so they, they had it done, they had a real good spec on it, and the price is exceptional. So I think we're getting a really, a really good deal here, and everything, everything else looks great. They did a great job.
Very good. And if there is no further discussion, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M sixteen fourteen?
Kadekla?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting. Ms. Prince, who should be first?
Mayor Protem Turbrak.
You go.
I have nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. Councilmember Kadekla.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Between this meeting and last meeting, it was an educational time for me. I was able to attend the MML Municipal League, Michigan Municipal League Conference in Lansing, and there was a lot of good things that were happening there. Talk about crowdfunding and things that are happening around various communities, and that was very good. And I want to thank Councilmember Baker for his amazing presentation a week ago Friday. Learned a lot, maybe an inch of what you've learned during your time in, at Harvard, but thank you for that. Also, I want to give my condolences to school board member Mary Jo Israel on the passing of her sister, and also to Representative Ellen Cogan Lipton on the passing of her sister. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for your kind words and for your engagement in that session. I really appreciated you being there. It was great. A couple of quick thoughts around the kinds of things that, that are going on throughout the city as well. There's the notion of creating a greater sense of place in our downtown, and that notion of that sense of place, we've talked about placemaking on occasion here in this forum, and that's, that basic, that sense of place is what causes or guides or inspires people to come to a given area, and then the desire or motivation or interest to stay there. So basically, an attractive place that you want to be a part of. And as we enter the formal stages of the budgeting process for the next fiscal year, is also that opportunity to look out a couple of years, to see where we want to take our downtown, where we want to take Coolidge in particular. And although the, the budgeting will come in subsequent cycles, now's the time to begin to, to have that conversation. What do we want our, our streetscapes to look like? How do we want pedestrians and bicyclists and people with strollers and wheelchairs and vehicles to all share this, this downtown that we have and be able to see all the great shops and, and exciting things that we have to offer? There's an event coming up in another week and a half or so, an opportunity to begin that conversation, having to do with the intersection of Rabina and Twelve Mile. Those of you that, that have had a chance to take a look at our city's master plan know that it has a series of what we call catalytic projects, things that are of particular interest to spark or, or ignite greater downtown activity. This is one of those projects, this opportunity to see how and what ways we might use the northern part of the, that intersection of Rabina and, and Twelve Mile, where we have the Rabina Rhapsodies today, this, you know, on an ongoing basis, for instance. It's coming up on April fifteenth, which is a Tuesday, at seven o'clock, and we're very excited to have this conversation. We're getting some tremendous assistance from the Michigan Municipal League to help us with this placemaking agenda, and we're real excited about that. And this is just one of many kinds of conversations that I hope we can have as a community as we look to the future, to see how is it that we want to shape our, our city, our, our neighborhoods, our downtown, our sense of place that we have for ourselves and for, for future generations to enjoy all that we have to offer here. Now, in terms of being able to enjoy all that we have to offer, it's also my, I think it's a pleasure, yeah, I'll call it a pleasure, to say that April is Distracted Driving Awareness Month. And you guys know I kind of get on a little safety kick every so often here, and, and this is a big one, right? So when we talk about distracted driving, there's actually a definition around this. Distraction occurs anytime you take your eyes off the road, your hands off the wheel, and your mind off your primary task, which is driving safely. When you're behind the wheel, that's what you're supposed to do. Any non-driving activity you engage in is a potential distraction. I learned a couple of facts around this as I was preparing this material for us here today. Five seconds. Five seconds is average time you take your eyes off the, the road when you're looking at a text. When you're traveling at fifty-five miles an hour, five seconds is enough time to cover the length of a football field. So just looking at that text, you are driving the length of a football field, and that's a lot of space to miss a lot of stuff. A quarter, twenty-five percent of teenagers respond to a text message once or more every time they drive. Twenty percent of teens and ten percent of parents admit to having extended multi-text, multi-message text conversations, and that's a lot more than just five seconds, fooling with those things. So far this year, in the US alone, there have been an estimated two hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one thousand crashes involving drivers using cell phones. It's about one every thirty seconds these days. This, I mean, come on, guys, let's be careful out there. This, there's a time and a place. When you get behind the wheel, that's your thing, right? You're supposed to drive yourself and any of your occupants and the others around you. Be safe, right? There's plenty of time to do whatever it is you need to do with your, with your texting, and it's all important to do all that. If you need to respond to something, just pull over, find a safe place to, you know, parking lot or under a tree or something like that, not wrapped around a tree like folks tend to do. It's, it's, it's serious business, so please pay attention to that. If you'd like more information, the National Safety Council, NSC, National Safety Council, has a tremendous amount of information around this. They have a thing called the Take the Pledge campaign, to pledge to, to not, not text and drive. It's a simple thing. Some folks choose to just turn off their cell phones, some just set it aside, put it on stun mode and try not to pay attention to it, to those kinds of things. It's, please, five seconds for the length of a football field, and there's, there's a lot can happen. And speaking of a lot of things happening, my last item I'd like to share tonight is, has to do with something that happened ninety-one years ago yesterday. Ninety-one years ago yesterday, I know you remember it well. April sixth, nineteen twenty-three. Larry Lorenzoni once said, birthdays are good for you. Statistics show that the people who have the most of them live the longest. Birthdays are good for you. Statistics show that the people who have the most of them live the longest. City of Berkeley recently celebrated a birthday of sorts. Ninety-one years ago yesterday, we, we became a village, our first official jurisdiction. Prior to that, we were part of a royal township, and there was an interest to have a little bit more control over the things going on here and then generate our revenue and things like that. So ninety-one years ago yesterday was our birthday as a village. As you also know, we have since progressed past the village state to that of a city, and we will be celebrating that anniversary coming up in May. So we'll have another, another opportunity to celebrate. If you'd like to learn more about these kinds of history, it's, I feel compelled to slightly mention that there is a history book that was mentioned as part of the Berkeley Days for the Historical Committee. It is now available in electronic format, for those of you, for whatever reason, are interested in having it like on a Kindle or the, the iBooks or any of those different formats, it's available at a, at a, at a very discounted rate, in electronic format. I did check it out. It's a full rendition of the book with all the photos and everything, so it's just like the book without the book. So if you've been holding out for that, now's your time. Speaking of time, I think I've exceeded mine, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. National Volunteer Week, this is National Volunteer Week, is a time to celebrate people doing extraordinary things through service. Established in nineteen seventy-four, National Volunteer Week focuses national attention on the impact and power of volunteerism and the service as an integral aspect of civic leadership. This week draws the support and endorsement of the president, congress, governors, mayors, and municipal leaders, as well as corporate and community groups across the country. National Volunteer Week is not only our moment in time to celebrate our volunteers, but to share ideas, practices, and stories, and learn what everybody else is doing and try and make our place better. That's the, the famous words about National Volunteer Week. What I want to say is, the city of Berkeley could not function without our volunteers. We have an exceptional group of volunteers. They do exceptional things, and talking about them here isn't enough. It's just, I want to thank all the volunteers in the city for everything they do because they're just fantastic, so. Oh, and by the way, it's also National Volunteer Week at Ireland. They checked out that just in case anybody wanted to know.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Mr. Sessom.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know how to follow that. Yes, our volunteers, they're critical, they're essential to our community. I don't know how we, we'd be able to do this without them. I just have a few items I'd like to remind everybody. First of all, again, to our residents, you know, please visit our website, and that's at BerkeleyMish.org, and subscribe to it as well so that you can get many of the, much of the information that is mentioned by the city council this evening. We'll have dates out there. We'll have a little bit of background information on some of the items and some links on, on some pages that you may need to go. So please, if you haven't done that already, please go to our website at BerkeleyMish.org and to get this information. Again, just as another reminder, our mobile app is coming. We're working on, on that diligently. We just finished doing all the background work that's required for that, and hopefully, within the next few weeks, I'm crossing my fingers, we will, we'll be able to, to, to send it out. However, I, I will probably be asking the, the city council to do a little bit of a test drive for, for us before we release it, and, and if you see any, any things that you'd like for us to improve or change, or, or you see some errors, you know, we'll, we're working on that. So hopefully, another week or so, we'll, we'll get that back. And then finally, I know this is on everybody's mind, city staff has been working diligently with our finance director and myself in terms of our budget preparation. That's one of our key things, and I might steal his, his thunder a little bit here, but we are having our budget sessions, council. I, I know I've, this is already on your calendars and you're all set, and for the audience out there, if you'd like to, to come to the budget sessions, they're, they're scheduled for May the twelfth and the thirteenth, and we also have the fourteenth set aside just in case we need additional more time, more time. But usually, we seem to, to be able to wrap this up in two days, so I want to thank the council on that. I have no other items, Your Honor, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Sabuda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have nothing this evening.
You. Mr. Attorney.
Your Honor, nothing this evening. Thank you.
Well, then it falls to me to remind all our players on the baseball team and in the horseshoes that training will continue. The weather is nice now, and we'll be training at a secret location. So we're sending that word out immediately. I see Lieutenant Deani back there, and he'll be advising the troops across the parking lot that their skills need to be honed for this occasion as well. So we're looking forward to Berkeley Days and the, and the great enjoyment and the community celebration that we always have with the baseball, the horseshoes, and the whole event. It's, it's a wonderful, a wonderful week, really. Then we, before we come back here again, we have a couple of major feasts coming up. We have Passover and Easter. And to those who celebrate those major and important feasts, we wish them a peaceful and joyful time. And on that note, then, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kadekla.
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Turbrak. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekla?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. The April seventh meeting of the Thirty-Fifth Council is adjourned.